Good morning, everyone. Good morning.
Good morning.
Am I on? I'm not?
Yeah, you're on.
It is on testing. Yes, it is. Good morning, everyone. Let me call to order this meeting of the Mayor Commission is our work session. Today is February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the day after the Super Bowl. Some of us are still in depression, but anyway, I digress. And it is ten oh four A.M. Ms. Johnson, how are you doing this morning?
Very well.
That's what I figured, okay. All right, all right. Okay, so item one, Ms. Johnson, do you want to tee this up, please?
Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Soufrant to do so, Mayor.
Okay, very good.
But I do want to note that we did hear from Commissioner Ward, and she's not going to be able to join us this morning.
Right, I did hear that as well. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor Commissioners, Brigitte Soufrant, Chief Financial Officer. I'm here today with Dathan Griffiths, our Treasury, Treasury Manager, and John Grady, Managing Director from Public Trust Advisors, to present our first annual investment report. Per the city's charter, we have an investment committee consisting of internal personnel who meet quarterly to oversee the management of a portion of the city's assets. The assets that are currently under management with Public Trust Advisors are funds that are not needed at the present time based on cash flow projections, nor are they spoken for for a specific purpose or intent such as bond dollars. With fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two being our first year of the annual report, our plan moving forward will be to present the annual report to you in this workshop session each year. And then we will also be working with administration to email you the quarterly reports with a few key highlights as they come about. We don't want to just start sending these emails to you and have you have no basis for what's going on in the reports. So in this format, we're hoping to give you a crash course in the investments that we're dealing with right now with the city with Public Trust Advisors. So with that, I would like to turn the presentation over to John Grady.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning.
Commissioners, John Grady with Public Trust Advisors. It's my pleasure to be here this morning, and thank you for the opportunity to present to you the annual investment report for your investment program. And since this is our first presentation to you all, my thought was to just take a few moments to give you a little background of Public Trust Advisors and my role. And I'm joined here by my colleague Rod Bettini as well. And we serve as your primary engagement managers for the City of West Palm Beach Investment Program. We work very closely with Ms. Soufrant, as well as Mr. Griffiths and the team. And in addition to this annual meeting, we speak quite frequently with the team, generally at least monthly. And then we have more formal quarterly meetings where we provide an investment review and market update. So with that, and please during this presentation, thoughts or questions for me regarding Public Trust, your program, or the economy, we'll finish this presentation with a few slides on an economic update. Please don't hesitate to jump in with any thoughts or questions. So Public Trust Advisors, we are an S E C-registered investment advisory firm. We're headquartered in Denver. You are served by our office here, not here, but in Orlando, Florida, which is where I'm based, along with my colleague Rod. Our sole focus at Public Trust Advisors is to provide asset management services to public entities. So all of the assets that we manage are very similar to the City of West Palm Beach's investment program and solely for public funds. And so with that, of course, every investment decision we make is around the safety of principal. That is the primary investment objectives. We recognize these are taxpayer dollars. And so that's how we focus our investment advisory program for our clients. The team that serves you, including, again, myself and Rod, we've been serving public entities my entire career. I started my career with Orange County. I was telling Ms. Johnson as an intern in the Budget Office and worked at Orange County for a number of years and then started.
What?
I was so excited hearing that.
That's right, that's right. And then, but I've spent the better part of twenty-plus years serving in this investment advisory role, so very, very thankful for that. As of December thirty-first, our firm manages approximately sixty-five billion dollars in assets, again, all public funds around the nation, including approximately ten billion here in the state of Florida. And speaking of our experience here in Florida, just wanted to share with you on this slide just a few of the other clients that we serve that are similar to the City of West Palm Beach. Now that, keeping that in mind, each entity is going to have their own risk tolerances, their own investment policy, their own cash flows, timing, capital projects. So all of those are unique characteristics to each of the clients that we serve. And with that, each client that we serve has their own individual investment program based on a number of factors here, which we'll talk about in a moment. The other thing that we want to make sure that we convey today is it's not just myself and Rod. We get to be here and meet with the city on a quarterly basis and present the investment program. We're supported by a team of seventy-five-plus other professionals here at Public Trust. And again, all of those individuals committed to this space across all areas of our firm.
Before you go any further, how often are the factors that the city looks at reviewed? Whether it's our risk tolerance, or how often does that get adjusted or reviewed?
Great question, Mayor. Thank you. So from an internal perspective at Public Trust, it's literally a daily management process. So the portfolio managers and teams and credit research teams are looking at your holdings, your structure, and all that on a daily basis. We generally have conversations with your team really monthly. Speak with Dathan quite often on strategy, asset allocation, and then more formally, every single quarter, we talk about the portfolios that we're managing, we talk about the asset allocation, the individual issuers, what's going on in the economy, the shape of the yield curve. So all of those both external economic factors tying into what is impacting the decisions for the investment of your program.
So Ms. Soufrant, will that be part of the quarterly reports that we get where you're giving a baseline on these issues to the commission, me and the commissioners?
The quarterly report will show what we have in the portfolio, what the yield is at that time. And then, yes, we can provide some of those key highlights of any changes or any pivots, perhaps, that we made over the last quarter to where we are, or things that we're keeping an eye on for the upcoming quarter. Because those are really the conversations that are happening between staff and John.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, when we talk about your portfolio, I'll address a few actually of those strategies. And this is exactly what we do during our investment reviews. Yes, thank you. Just quickly on this slide, I wanted you to have this in your packet. These are the primary engagement managers, again, not just from the investment advisory, which is where my role fits, but also portfolio manager, credit research, compliance, operations, and reporting. Just a couple of highlights on this. The portfolio managers that support the city have been managing public funds here in Florida for the better part of twenty-plus years. The compliance and reporting operations, a couple of individuals. Jen Welsh is our General Counsel and Chief Compliance Officer. We were fortunate to have her join Public Trust after serving in various roles, but more recently, five years with the Securities and Exchange Commission. So she brings a good, a great amount of wealth to our firm with that background. And then, of course, credit research, which I'll talk a little bit about that with regards to your portfolio. But I do want to mention, and I may repeat this, but that any purchased security outside of a treasury or agency especially has to be reviewed by our independent credit team, has to be approved by that credit team. And the portfolio management team cannot buy a security unless it is approved. And those names are reviewed continuously. And where we, that brings a lot of value so that we're not just buying an issue or just based on our credit rating, or that it fits in your maturity structure within your investment policy guidelines, but it's actually reviewed and determined to be an appropriate investment by our team.
All right, you may be getting into this later, but one of the other areas of concern to me is the diversity of, you know, racial, gender of the portfolio managers. Because it's important to me as mayor that we have some of, some minority groups, some women-owned companies that are able to participate in the investment. So is that something that you can talk to us about?
Absolutely.
As part of our individual program?
Yes, sir. So when we're looking at whether it's the individual portfolio managers within the company, which we're currently continuing to hire and looking at that as part of our hiring process, because we've grown, we've been fortunate, we're looking to fill two more portfolio manager positions within the company. And so those, diversity is a big part of that. In addition to whenever we're buying and selling securities within your portfolio, we have thirty-plus broker-dealers that we work with, and that's a big part of that selection process as well to include minority broker-dealers with regards to those transactions.
Okay, thank you.
So as I'd mentioned, this is hopefully a good graphic to show us and to show you how we operate and serve the City of West Palm Beach. And that is that each of these departments within Public Trust, we don't operate in a silo. We operate together, and then each of these areas serves the city. And periodically, we'll have different members of our team actually join within, with the investment review. So it's not just myself and Rod and the portfolio manager. And so again, just to highlight the independent credit research review, when we're talking compliance on the bottom right, what we're referring to there is each trade that's done for your investment portfolio has, goes through a pre-trade compliance check, it goes through a post-trade compliance check, it goes through a compliance check at the end of each day, and then, of course, it's checked for compliance each month. And then, as we're moving around to the operations and accounting, while you all do a reconciliation of your statement each month, your custodian, we do that as well. So before your statement is prepared and sent out to you all, and before we present it to you, it's been reconciled by our team as well. And it's another, a great internal control, I believe, because it does make sure that we're checking your custody account versus what our investment statements are reporting, and that they tie out. So that, another internal control. So again, all of these areas working together to serve the city. And our partnership with you all, and I won't read through every one of these bullet points, but just a couple of highlights. We've been fortunate to work with the city since two thousand and thirteen. We originally were hired with two other managers, or three individual, there were three separate managers with three mandates. And then through the R F, and that was through an RFP, competitive selection process. And then in two thousand and twenty, the city went out for an RFP, the contract time had ended. And the city went out for another RFP and decided to utilize a sole investment manager. We were very fortunate to be selected to continue to serve the city, so we're very thankful for that. So we've been serving the city as a sole manager since two thousand and twenty. Again, a very experienced team here in the state of Florida that serves you, not just advisory. You've got portfolio managers based here in Florida as well. We mentioned the firm-wide support, and we've also mentioned the close relationship that we have with the city's Chief Financial Officer, Treasury Manager, and Investment Committee. And where that is very important, and Mr. Mayor, maybe to your comment or question earlier, is the strategy of the portfolio and how it's important that we understand the cash flows of the city. If you have any major capital projects that are coming onboard or anything that's going to impact the cash flows, certainly the expenditures, to ensure that the portfolios are managed to provide the appropriate liquidity that you'll need over time. In the meantime, we also want to structure a program that's diversified, that allows you to hopefully earn additional income versus keeping everything passive. And as we'll see, that's very beneficial when we go through these interest rate cycles, where we're going through significant increases, and then we'll see declines, and then back. And so the district's approach to that has done very well. You've got this multiple duration strategy, which we'll talk about. And that has provided you a benefit in a rising interest rate environment. Currently, your liquidity funds are benefiting from the significant move in two thousand and twenty-two. And then your longer-term portfolios that Public Trust manages, those benefit you as interest rates come down and protect you from having all of your investments in a very low or zero-interest rate environment. We've talked about this, but again, just for your packet, just know that the communication is very significant to us, and we believe adds a lot of value to the relationship. So we'll shift over from our partnership unless there are any thoughts or questions from any of the commissioners. Thank you. So just a couple of slides on your investment program review. So I thought I'd add a slide in here just for your benefit and some background that all public funds are governed by Florida State Statute two one eight spot four one five, or two one eight point four one five. And the nice thing about the Florida statute that governs investments, which it varies from state to state, is it gives a lot of flexibility. It provides a lot of definitions with regard to ensuring that each public entity has a delegation of authority, the scope of funds, performance, continuing education, all of these key components. But this, the statute's also written to allow each entity to define the permitted investments within their own investment policy statement. And so two eighteen does that. A couple of other statutes that govern is Chapter two eighty. And what that does is that governs the public funds deposits, meaning that if you're a public entity, you are required by law to only deposit into banks that are called, that are considered qualified public depositories. And those are defined by the state, the state's Chief Financial Officer. The reason for that is when you're depositing funds in a bank, that Q P D has to put a portion of those assets in a state insurance pool. And that protects public funds in case of a bank default. Fortunately, that hasn't happened, but it is a nice, a nice added protection to have that collateral. And then Statute one sixty-three is another statute that governs local government investment pools. And really, local government investment pools are very similar to a money market fund, where they provide daily liquidity, much like a bank deposit. And so those are three of the, of the primary state statutes that govern, again, public funds here in the state of Florida. Your Public Trust-managed portfolio, worth mentioning, your investment policy statement, which, by the way, very well-written, most recently approved in two thousand and nineteen. It's very comprehensive. It really fits the format here in Florida and nationally as well. So we're very, very proud of the policy that you all have developed and that we get to work with. We're going to be reviewing that. We review it each year, in fact. And we're going to be reviewing it again here shortly with Ms. Soufrant and Mr. Griffiths. And potentially come back with some recommended updates that we do periodically. And then lastly, on this slide, that last bullet point, which is very important as well, is that all of the assets that we manage are held in a third-party custodian, meaning that we have no control over those assets from moving them in or out of your custody account. Only designated authorized individuals here at the city can do that. We're able to designate trades to allow for those funds, those bonds to be bought and sold. But again, that's another great internal control feature in how your asset management program is structured. And then, as I'd mentioned before, just looking at your program, the program is really defined by the primary criteria here in this top, and that is the sources and uses of funds, ad valorem revenues, of course, being a primary source of funds. And then, and then how are they being expended, short-term expenditures, payroll, debt service, the timing of those expenditures, those establish the criteria for how we're building out these investment portfolios. Of course, your investment policy statement, which we just mentioned, and just a few highlights of that, of course, they're going to define what is the limited allocation in individual sectors between treasuries, agencies, municipal bonds, corporate notes, as well as what is the permitted maturity limitation within each of those structures. Safety-first objective, we've talked about the multiple duration, and we'll talk about that again here in a moment. The nice thing is, again, using these two investment program strategies, the overall duration of your investment program is right around one year. So you have a lot of liquidity opportunities while still utilizing the yield curve to invest in bonds, more recently, anywhere from three and a half upwards of five percent yields, which are rates we haven't seen since two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight. So that's very beneficial of you to take advantage of that. Meanwhile, your liquidity funds that provide you daily liquidity are offering rates four and a half percent as well because of that Fed funds rate. Those are tied directly to the Fed's move. And so as the Fed increases that rate, your overnight rate in those L G I Ps and deposits goes up as well. So just wanted to highlight a few of these strategies. So when we're looking at public funds, again, the maximum maturity is generally five to seven years. You allow seven years in many of your asset classes. I'm just showing through five just to show these strategies. But the idea there is that to utilize the slope of the yield curve, meaning investing out a little longer in most interest rate environments and holding on to that yield. But we generally don't want to go out too far, because the longer the duration, of course, the more market volatility each bond has in overall portfolio. So these are very characteristic of public entity investment programs. L G I P, we just mentioned, of course, daily liquidity. The enhanced cash strategy, which we've utilized in various times with the city, not right now, because your L G I P is offering a similar or better rate. But the enhanced cash is an opportunity where you can ladder out maturities throughout your fiscal year and use those for ongoing cash flows. And then the two that you do use, of course, are the one-to-three-year and the one-to-five-year strategy. And we'll talk about those here in a moment. We look at your portfolios. But really, when we say one-to-three and one-to-five, what that, the reason that those are named that is the one-to-three-year has most of your assets within a one-year maturity and a three-year maturity. And then the one-to-five-year has assets between a one-year maturity and a five-year maturity. And then when those roll down below that, we're generally reinvesting out, maintaining a target duration over the life cycle of the portfolio. And with that in mind, it's worth mentioning, our role in managing your portfolios is not to try to time the market in any way. That is a, that is a fool's approach to investment management. And so really, it is to understand your risk tolerances, establish the appropriate duration strategies, and then manage those strategies through both rising and declining interest rate environments. We do make some adjustments, of course, as markets change and based on risk tolerances from the city. But that said, they're generally maintained within, within a parameter of duration and asset allocation by design. And so if, you know, in times when we're asked, why are we investing outside of an L G I P or outside of a bank deposit, it really comes down to longer-term historical performance and diversification. And so again, yours, portfolios of the one-to-three and one-to-five-year over time have historically provided higher returns in keeping all of those assets in an overnight liquidity strategy. And that, that should be normal over interest rate cycles, because you're taking more risk, investing out along the curve. The goal would be to earn higher income. So this chart just shows you what that looks like on an annualized basis over the last twenty years, which of course is through multiple interest rate cycles. There will be times where shorter-term strategies will outperform longer-term strategies, much like what we've seen in two thousand and twenty-two, simply because rates have gone up so quickly. In fact, they've gone up more quickly last year than they have in over three decades. It's amazing what took place in twenty-two. But that has also allowed your longer-term portfolios to be reinvested in these higher coupon bonds that are going to provide these higher, the higher income opportunities in the next two, three, four-plus years. And I'll give a couple of numerical examples of that as well. Any thoughts or questions? I want to be respectful of your time as well. Make sure we're covering it. Okay, great. Thank you. So in this section, I thought we'd just cover a couple of highlights of economic commentary and then tie that into your strategy. And then, of course, make sure that we answer any questions that you might have. So one of those key characteristics of our economy, or economic indicators, I should say, is gross domestic product. And that GDP figure came in at two point nine percent in that fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty-two. So not a bad GDP reading at just under three percent, following a three point two percent in that third quarter. A couple of highlights that may be causing concern, you're likely reading more and more about, a higher likelihood of a recession here in two thousand and twenty-three. And that is the two largest components of GDP are consumer spending and business investment and inventories, of course. And that makes up well over eighty-five percent of our overall economy. And so if we look at the last few quarters in particular, business investment in inventories and investing in their plant equipment, they were actually contractionary in June and September, and they were barely positive, twenty-seven basis points positive here in the fourth quarter. So that's just suggesting that businesses are expecting consumers to slow down our spending. And then from the consumer perspective, on an annual basis through December, we had the lowest contribution to GDP as consumers going back to two thousand and thirteen. So after really a gangbuster two thousand and twenty-one of consumer spending, we really started to see that slowdown here in two thousand and twenty-two. And likely, looking at that here in the first quarter of twenty-three, you know, a couple of other things you're likely seeing is credit card debt reaching record levels, consumers spending down their savings that they had built up during the pandemic. And interestingly enough, a lot of times, if you look back historically, spend, spending rates will generally come down in better economic times, because as consumers, we feel strong about our jobs and, and, you know, potential equity in our homes and our 401Ks. And right now, it doesn't appear to be that's the reason. Right now, it's because inflation has really hit the walls of consumers. And so it's really bringing down those savings rates as a result of these higher costs. So speaking of that, just, and by the, so GDP is expected to potentially be a half a percent positive here in two thousand and twenty-three. We're very early. A lot can happen over the next ten-plus months, or ten or so months, to see how that plays out. But inflation, of course, is the big talking point, as we know. And that has been for the better part of fifteen to eighteen months. As we saw in June, June inflation peaked on a year-over-year basis at nine point one percent, highest level again in four decades. Fortunately, we're seeing inflation come down, but it's still very high. If we look at this chart, which just goes back to two thousand and six, at six and a half percent overall inflation, we're still very elevated, far above the Fed's target rate of around two percent. And then the gray is the core inflation. So even if we take out food and energy prices, core inflation, which covers all other expenses that we have, is still very elevated as well. And this is likely going to, will continue to weigh on the consumer in twenty-three. Now that said, of course, this is the Fed's big challenge, right? Their two main, their two main objectives are full employment and stable monetary policy. We seem to have full employment. The labor markets are somewhat a little, a little confusing these days, but there seems to be full employment, very low unemployment. Here in the state of Florida, it's below two and a half percent. We saw a jobs report of over five hundred thousand last month, which was almost three times what was expected. And so that's great news. The other side, though, is of course, stable monetary policy and the Fed's challenge to get inflation back to around two percent. And so we'll likely see the Fed continue to increase that overnight rate to try to find that balance and continue to bring this inflation down. That said, with inflation being higher, that is what's pushing up interest rates. I just mentioned jobs, so again, just to highlight this, it took around twenty-nine months to make up the twenty-two million jobs that were lost in March and April of two thousand and twenty. The good news is we're now positive in that job growth, two hundred and twenty-three thousand jobs in December, and again, five hundred and fifty thousand plus in January, so that was good news. I'm not going to read these. This is for your packet. But really, what this slide highlights is the dramatic increase in interest rates. If we go back to September of two thousand and twenty-one, we saw rates very close to zero. We saw two-year treasuries paying around twenty-five to thirty basis points. And we saw the entire curve shift up around four hundred basis points, really in a matter of, you know, twelve months. But if you look at it from the Fed's perspective, they didn't start raising rates until March. So really, in nine months, they raised that rate close to four percent. Now we're at four point seven five percent, as you all know, from that last Fed meeting. As I mentioned a few moments ago about not trying to time the market, we don't have a crystal ball. This slide shows that even what you might consider the smartest folks in the room, the Federal Open Market Committee members, don't have a good crystal ball either. If we look at the gray line, that represents what the Fed was expecting the overnight rate to be in twenty-two, twenty-three, and a little bit longer term. And so back in December of twenty-one, the Fed projected maybe two to three rate hikes all, throughout all of two thousand and twenty-two. They ended up increasing it the equivalent of fifteen twenty-five basis point rate hikes during two thousand and twenty-two. And so the Fed was wildly wrong, and that was due to a number of factors. But I think inflation really taking off a lot more than they even anticipated. And so when do they hit their peak? That remains to be seen. The thought is that that overnight rate would likely go above the five percent. But it really depends. Do we continue to see strong job growth? Do we, are we as consumers going to continue to spend, or do we draw back? At that point in time, if we see an economic slowdown, you're likely going to see the Fed go on pause, and then at some point, potentially have to cut the overnight rate to spur economic growth. So that is the cycle. This chart, which is the blue line again, as of December, they'll update this again in March, suggests that they will probably peak around five, five and a quarter. You hear other folks suggesting they need to, they need to go higher than that. But then at some point, when they peak again, how long will they keep it at that level and before they, they have to cut the rate? The orange line is the market's expectations of just a couple of weeks ago. And so you can see there's quite a bit of a difference. The market is expecting the Fed to have to cut rates a lot sooner, and by potentially a full percentage point more than the Fed's projecting here in the next twelve to eighteen months. So of course, remains to be seen. So of course, remains to be seen where we are with that. That is another, again, just to highlight the benefit of your multiple duration strategy. You've got strategies that will benefit in both of those and make sure that you have the liquidity you need to meet your expenses. And so from a U.S. Treasury yield curve basis, this is what that looks like. Again, this dark blue line from September of '21, as I mentioned earlier, very low yields. As we fast forward to September of, of last year, the end of this last fiscal year, of course, is that light blue line. So much higher rates, still pretty positively stoked. It started to invert slightly there between that three- to five-year area on the far right-hand side. And then if we look at that gray line, I'm sorry, the gray in the, the gray line, you can see that 4.64%. Of course, that's reflective of the Fed's overnight rate. But you can see, once you get past that 12-month period, it actually starts to decline. So we're already starting to see an inverted yield curve. And when we go through these interest rate cycles, it's very normal to see a positive slope. Then we see rates shift up positive slope. Then we see the yield curve flatten. And then over time, see that yield curve start to invert, signaling a potential slowdown in the economy. You likely have heard or read where the inverted yield curve is a huge predictor of an upcoming recession, right? But the question is, when will that happen? What kind of recession will we have? Will it be a consumer-led recession? Will it be construction-led recession in this case? Given that housing was really the one dominant force. If we look at from 2011 through today, the housing was really what kept this economy going for the better part of a decade, which was a great thing. So I think there's still a lot of questions, of course, on, on what will happen here in 2023 with regards to, to the overall economy. But we are seeing that, that yield curve invert and actually pretty significantly as well. With that said, that, that doesn't mean that for your investment portfolios that we're managing for you, that we're going to keep everything short because that provides a type of risk called reinvestment rate risk. Whereas if we keep things short and rates keep coming down, then you're stuck in these lower yielding environments. So we continue to maintain that duration for you over time to capture these yields. I know a lot, a lot on this chart. Really what I wanted to highlight for, for us here is if you look at the far right-hand side, we now have a federal funds rate or that overnight rate, 4.75%. And then anything past that, including a three-month treasury, which is the green line, the two-year, the five-year in the gray, and then even the 10-year in yellow. The further we go out on the curve, again, we're seeing these lower rates. That's just, again, reaffirming what we saw on the last chart of the inverted curve. The last time I saw this chart that looked like this was in December of 2018. And that's when the Fed had reached their peak of 2.5% of that overnight rate. They, at that time, had actually projected another full percentage point increase in the overnight rate. Not only did they not raise the rate in 2019, they actually started to cut that rate. So I'm not suggesting that that's what's going to happen in the next three to six months or, or any timeframe. But it's interesting that we're now, again, in an inverted yield curve environment. We're seeing where consumer spending is slowing down and some other indicators out there other than the jobs, which again, is, is very good right now. That could potentially suggest an economic slowdown. The yield curve is what we're looking at for you. We're showing treasuries. Just know when we're looking for your, for investment options in your investment portfolio, whenever we're going outside of treasuries, as I mentioned, remember, it has to be an approved investment, number one. And then number two, we also want it to be paying what we consider a relative additional value, right? If you're going to invest outside of a treasury into a corporate note, we believe you should be paid an additional premium for that. You're taking some corporate note risk with that strategy. And so just the last few slides here, just to review your program. You currently, again, have a liquidity portfolio that's managed internally by Ms. Ufron and Mr. Griffiths. And that includes these, these three different investments. Florida Prime and Florida Class represent those local government investment pools. Again, they provide daily liquidity. And then SunTrust Bank is your bank deposit, which also you have daily liquidity through that qualified public. SunTrust, now Truist, a qualified public depository, just to confirm that with you. And your liquidity portfolio makes up around 45% of your, as of September 30th, of your overall investment program. So again, very balanced. And that, that generally will go up a little higher here and through the end of the calendar year. And at this point, because you've received your avalorum revenue, so you're, you have a higher balance in, in a liquidity pool right now. And then you, you spin that down throughout your fiscal year.
How do we choose Truist as the depository?
Yes, sir. I think that was, I'll leave it, Mr. Griffiths, but likely through an RFP process where you do a banking selection?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And how often is that looked at?
Is that every five years, Dathan?
The, the, we are actually in the process of
Yes.
looking for another RFP to, to replace.
So that'll come out later this year? The RFP, the new RFP?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Have we done it on a five-year cycle or on an ass needed basis? Or what has been our, our history?
The, 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 the history is that we, we, we have actually had some.
We've actually had SunTrust, or which transitioned to Truist for, for several years. We're just now looking to go to RFP to, to change them out. In fact, we just had a recent discussion to, to put the, the contract out for RFP.
All right. So you said it's for several years. Why was it not done more regularly? Just because of the previous CFO?
Risk practice?
Okay.
Yes.
What, 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 what are best practices for at least a review of the depository with other cities?
The, the Government Finance Officers Association actually recommends like every seven years.
Every seven years?
Yes.
Okay. And so we will start doing that here, right?
Absolutely.
Correct. It's not that we haven't as much as a lot of times your banking contracts because this is your prime depository that we interact with and have other services typically that we utilize, whether it's accepting payments or putting payments out via ACH. So they normally have a core five-year contract and then you have multiple options for additional years to that contract. So we're still within that contract language. We just do not have the last date of the RFP with us today, so I apologize for that. But yes, as Dathan has indicated, we have sent the information to procurement and are in the process of the RFP.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I just had a question about the liquidity portfolio. So you said that that's managed internally?
Yes.
Do you all advise on, on those investments as well?
We do. We, we do. So that's part of the overall strategy is determining the appropriate amount that you need for liquidity. I did not mention earlier, so the two LGIPs that you're using are AAA-rated funds by S&amp;P. So you, you have a AAA rating. For the record, we don't just rely on a rating. And then the other part of that is doing a review of what's being held in those investment programs as well. And again, working closely with the city to make sure you have the appropriate amounts in there. So we, our approach is very holistic, not just here's our public trust managed portfolio, but it's really working with the city to know how you're invested in, in, in whole.
Great. And what are some of the things that you look at when you're doing some of that forecasting to determine, do we have enough in there, not too much in there?
Correct. So there's a process that Dathan undergoes with his team as well as in conjunction with conversations with me where we're looking at our budget. We're looking at capital projects. We are looking at needs. We're looking at payroll. You know, there, there's many things that we end up looking at to see how much cash do we need on a day-to-day basis. Out of these funds, Dathan will regularly come to me and say, okay, we have, you know, $5 million right now that we can go out and bid out for certificates of deposit, for CDs. And then we will negotiate, you know, we'll put that out, we'll get the information back, bring Ms. Johnson paperwork to sign. And we are on our way with those CDs, which add to the laddered effect with John and the investment that he is managing. So it's very typical for government entities to have this philosophy with your day-to-day cash where with any of these three facilities, we can draw down funds on a daily basis if we needed to make that ACH payment for, for debt. I mean, debt payments is one of our largest ACHs that go out the door every couple of months. So Dathan has this approach of reviewing all of this data so that we make sure we have the appropriate cash within our grasp for our expenditure needs.
Yes, go ahead.
A follow-up. Excuse me. And how would you characterize our ability to do accurate forecasting? Have we been pretty on par for, for what we need? Are we learning as we go and having some best practices now that we're implementing to help with that?
I, I would say we have room to get tighter, meaning we could have, we could invest a little more of what we have right now with cash on hand, which in the current climate, it's actually okay because your, your LGIPs are paying very decent rates right now in the climate because they don't want to commit to a higher interest rate elsewhere that you lock up for three years that they have to pay. So right now, we don't need to be as aggressive because we're earning good interest. We are very conservative in the amount of funds that we have on hand because the last thing you want to do is me or Dathan call John and say, hey, we need $10 million tomorrow. And then he has to look and sell an investment potentially at a loss. We don't ever want to be in that position.
Thank you.
Thank you. The other part of the investment program, and this is around 55%, so probably more like 50% of the, the portfolio at this point in time with your avalorums having been received, are the two, the one to three year and the one to five year. We're presenting them to you today in an aggregate. This is we, during our investment reviews, we review the one to three, one to five, and then we show an aggregate picture as well. And so we can see some of the portfolio characteristics there on the top right-hand side. You know, we wanted to make sure we highlight for you because it's important to mention and, and understand. And that is that unrealized gain-loss figure and how we went from an unrealized gain at the end of 2021 to a pretty significant unrealized loss at the end of '22. That is unrealized. And so it would only be realized if we sold the entire portfolio on September 30th in this analysis. And that has everything to do with as rates moved up through to 2022, the bonds that were purchased in 2020, 2021, 2019 at lower rates, now they have a lower market value because of the current rate environment. And that's natural to occur just as when rates go down, you will be back in a situation where you'll have an unrealized gain in there. We wouldn't recommend you take the gain either because it's really a net zero-sum game. That is, if you're selling at this loss, you could make it up by simply reinvesting out in the current market and you would make up, that's that arbitrage. And the same holds true in an unrealized gain. So the goal for us is to, again, stay with that targeted duration of 1.8 years and two and a half years for each of these individual portfolios. A majority of your income over time will be, pardon me, the majority of your return will be from the income, right? Those are the coupon payments. And so when we're looking at that, and if we go to this chart on the bottom, a lot, a lot going on here, but I wanted to illustrate for us what that looks like. Going back to October of '21, you know, yield, yield, the two-year treasury was, again, yielding anywhere from 30. This is, we're showing by October, 44 basis points of some of the transactions we were doing, buying a two-year treasury. If we fast forward one year to September of this year, you know, if you're buying anywhere from two to four-year security, your yields are now 3.92%. This was through September. Fortunately, rates continue to move up in that fourth quarter. And so a lot of times it, it makes a little sense to put yields into dollars. And so if we bought a $1 million two-year treasury a year ago at 44 basis points, it would be, it would pay you about $4,400 on an annualized basis. Buying that same two-year treasury in the current interest rate environment or showing that 3.92, that same treasury or $1 million is going to pay $39,200 each year. So we're literally seeing income opportunities that are very significant versus where they were for the last couple of years. So that's why with your portfolio, sometimes we are selling these securities. That's generally what we do when they get under a year. But we're capturing these higher yields and again, buying two, three, four-plus years and locking that income in over the next few years. And so likely, when we're here next year, you'll see significant improvement in income and interest earnings and certainly into '24. Even as rates come down, your portfolios will be protected for that near term because of the, the investments that are occurring right now in the investment portfolio. So that's really what, that's our plan, our goal. These are the transa, so Mr. Mayor, when I was talking about that, those are the transactions we talk about. Did we buy corporate notes? What corporate notes did we buy? And what was the yield spread? For instance, we bought a corporate note, a AA-plus National Securities Clearing Corp. in the fourth quarter, paid 0.8% higher than a similar maturity U.S. Treasury. So we do get into that level of detail in our quarterly reports. I won't go through all of that with you, but I wanted to give you an example of some of the discussion we have. And I'm hoping that we can, and I'm looking forward to presenting to you all on an annual basis as well. And certainly in the interim, if you ever have questions for us through the committee, we'll be happy to get you whatever information you're looking for. I will wrap up my comments with just saying that I've been thankful to work with the city for a number of years and I truly appreciate the partnership. When it came up that we'd be presenting today, I thought that was a great idea. I think this is a really good way for you to have more knowledge of our role working with Ms. Ufron, Mr. Griffiths, and the Investment Committee team. So thank you for this opportunity and certainly want to make sure I answer any questions on your strategy.
Well, thank you. And I'm glad that we're starting to do this on a more regular basis. Sort of looking forward to, to getting the quarterly reports now that we've had this as kind of a, a level set. And it's so important, not only for us as the policymakers, but for the public who may be listening in, to hear how much thought goes into the investment of taxpayer dollars and with such credible advisors.
Thank you.
Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Lambert?
Thanks. I may have missed the chart. Do you have a, a chart or can you describe our, our approach to risk? I know that you mentioned with our liquid assets, we're a little bit more conservative. Is it the same approach in these assets as well?
It is very, it's very conservative. You know, when we're looking at corporate note names, for instance, the city is permitted to invest in corporate notes that have an A rating or better. So in the investment universe, that's very high quality. Your names are generally A, A+, AA+. There's, I think there's two or three AAA names anymore, so there aren't many AAA names. So you're generally in the top tier with those corporate notes. You're diversified. I mentioned the credit team. The other thing I'll mention is that we also diversify. So we're not going to own more than 5% in any name. Generally, we're less than 3% of any individual name. So for instance, if we own Walmart or Amazon, it's a couple, Home Depot is a couple of examples. We're going to only own a certain percentage in those names. So you're diversified. Then you're diversified not only by name, but also by industry as well, whether it's financial, technology, consumer. So all of those factors go in once we're outside of that treasury or agency, and agency being Fannie or Freddie. Once we're outside of that space and getting even into municipal bonds, we own a couple of Palm Beach County issued debt, by the way. We review all of the names that we buy, even in the municipal space. So those are ways that we help diversify. And that, we believe, adds a significant amount of safety to, to the program. Hopefully that was helpful.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
I would also like to see, certainly in the quarterly reports and the next annual report, some information concerning the diversity of the firms that we use that, that we're investing our money with or through the brokers that we're using, just to understand that we as a city are making good faith effort to
Yes, sir.
employ women-owned, minority-owned firms. So if you could incorporate that as part of your reporting, I'd appreciate it.
We'll definitely do that, Mr. Mayor, and, and document when some of those transactions. Of course, our goal, the, the goal in the state statute is you're competitively bidding every security, but we want to make sure that all of these brokers, dealers have an opportunity to do transactions with us and with the city's portfolio.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? President Fox?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I wanted to touch on what you just mentioned about the municipal participation. And I'm looking at the top 10 holdings and the city and county of Honolulu are in our top 10 holdings. I'm curious if you can just describe, I guess, a little bit about, you know, what is it that we're investing in there? But also, are there other commissions around the country that are sitting, talking about investing in West Palm Beach? Is that an option or how do we find, find out about these possibilities and?
Yes, Commissioner, that is an option, actually. And so there are, let me just say, with the municipal issuers, especially once you get outside of the state-level GO or general obligation, there are thousands and thousands of issuers. So it would be impossible for our team to review every one of those names. But generally, what we have is when a client will ask us to review a specific issue that they're familiar with. I believe actually these two Palm Beach counties that were, that we've invested in, we were asked to, to look into those. We serve several entities here in the area as well. So our credit team reviewed those two issues. They met our criteria and they were approved. So we bought some of these bonds, not only for yours, for others. But generally, the municipal holdings are reviewed just like any corporate note. When we look at the city and state of Honolulu, Hawaii, that was a name that the team saw that they were going to be issuing some debts and reviewing just like we would any other, the financial conditions of, of Hawaii in that particular issue. What, what revenue support that debt? All of those things go into that credit review. So that's how we make that, that decision of the credit team.
John just mentioned debt, but that's how. So when we go out for, to the public market for the general obligation debt, that's how other people could purchase a piece of the West Palm Beach bond or a debt. And, and that really is from a government agency. And that really is from a government agency. That's where, when you hear about our Moody's rating or our Fitch rating about our financial sustainability, that is what the other government entities and investors look at when they want to purchase a part of our debt.
Thank you.
And I'll just wrap that, the, so, with the city issues debt, you know, we've heard both sides. Well, should we buy our own debt if we're issuing our, so, you know, that's something for the city to decide. But if you are issuing debt and you want us to look at that for your portfolio or our client's portfolio, we would review that name and certainly, once approved, we would be able to add that to our permitted issuer list.
Okay. Any other questions, Commissioners? All right, again, thank you so much for the support. Great job, and I look forward to hearing more from you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. We appreciate the partnership.
Very good. All right, item two, regulation of medical marijuana dispensaries. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rick Green, Development Services Director. And I'd like to talk on a totally different topic, on medical marijuana dispensers. But just to preface my, my presentation, this discussion was initiated as a result of a letter that the city received back on November 14th by Rafael Clemente of the DDA, who's in the audience with us today. That night, Bill Jacobson, representing the DDA, appeared before the City Commission and asked us to look at medical marijuana dispensaries, particularly in light of the fact that one was under construction at 300 Clematis Street. So, just to provide a little history, and we have had a long history on dispensaries. When we first started working on this concept, there were 29 states and the District of Columbia that allowed medical marijuana. That number has increased to 39 states and the District of Columbia today. So, the states in yellow were recently added within the last few years. So, the medical marijuana could be in the form of capsules, vaporizers, oral syringes, nasal sprays. And the pictures you see, the three pictures you see, are representative of what a medical marijuana dispensary looks like. They're very clean operation, very neat and organized. So, the actual definition of a medical marijuana facility, as indicated in our zoning and land development regulations, it's a facility licensed or registered by the Florida Department of Health, which dispenses medical marijuana or products containing marijuana and related supplies. It's important to note that there is no cultivation of medical marijuana at the facility. There's no transfer or no preparation. It's simply a dispensary, as the name implies. So, just to provide a history, in the state of Florida, on June 16th, 2014, the state adopted the Florida Compassionate Medical Cannabis Act. And that became law, which allowed for the production, dispensing of a low THC derivative to qualified patients. So, we went through an exhaustive process. For those of you who are here, you may remember. But we had two meetings with our planning board back in late 2016 and 2017. We adopted a moratorium on February 27th, 2017, as to the filing of new facilities while we worked on our zoning and land development regulations to address this topic. We went back to the planning board in October of 2017. We subsequently had a mayor commission workshop in February of 2018, went back to the downtown action committee because some of the regulations impacted downtown, another meeting with the planning board. And then finally, on June 18th, 2018, the City Commission adopted ordinance 4780-18, which amended the zoning code to identify, identify medical marijuana dispensaries in their use as permitted within certain zoning districts within the city. So, I'll go through that now. So, in our permitted use table, you see a map on the right. So, to provide some clarification to the commission at that time, we identified in red where the medical marijuana facilities could be located. And they were located in our neighborhood commercial districts, the general commercial, industrial and industrial light, our community service district, our mixed-use districts, N-Mud and C-Mud, Northwood and Curry Mixed Use, and then the non-residential sub-districts in the downtown master plan. So, you see, they're shown as a permitted with extra requirements. That's what the PXR signifies. So, you see in our permitted use table, Article 9 has the neighborhood commercial district, general commercial, industrial, industrial light, and community service. The PXR is an extra condition that's required of any dispensary located within the city. And that specific requirement was they could not be located within 500 feet of a school. That could be a public or private school, elementary, middle, or secondary school. So, that is a standard. If a medical marijuana facility cannot meet that standard of the 500-foot separation, it is not approved. Similarly, in our mixed-use districts, we have, in Northwood, it's permitted in the core and transition and edge districts. And then in our Curry Mixed Use districts, it's permitted in the core and transition, but not the edge. And then in our downtown, again, we have the same separation of 500 feet from a school. So, you see the Dreyfus Campus, St. Mary's, Rosarian, and Roosevelt. This is approximately the 500-foot buffer. It's not permitted in the residential district, so you've got the historic Northwest, Bresford and Providencia in blue. So, anywhere in red, the medical marijuana facility could be located. So, we did an inventory of all of the existing facilities in the city of West Palm Beach. And another very important point is that we cannot distinguish between a medical marijuana facility and the pharmacy. By law, they are treated one in the same. So, the way we treat a medical marijuana facility is no different than we treat a CVS or a Walgreens. So, when we enact certain regulations, we have to keep that into consideration. So, we looked at where they were located, both medical marijuana dispensaries as well as pharmacies within the city. And you see, we have six public stores. You have two Walmart stores. You have a series of CVS stores and Walgreens, a total of 13. You've got other related pharmacies totaling 13. Also in the city, these are just individual business pharmacies that are located. And then in the city, we currently have eight medical marijuana dispensaries. I'll go through those very quickly. You have Altmed at 313 DeTura, and I'll indicate that the ones in green are located downtown. You have Farmhouse Market Place, 1001 Okeechobee, the Green Dragon just off of Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard at the Forum Place. You've got Liberty Health Sciences right in front of the Home Depot at Palm Beach Lakes. The Rise Dispensary across the street from the library at 430 Clematis Street. You've got the Sunburn Cannabis at 537 Clematis. That building has since been painted. You've got Surterra at 2500 South Dixie. And the one that caused the concern with the DDA was the Cure Leaf at 300 Clematis Street. So, in summary, you've got six at Publix, two at Walmart, five CVS, eight Walgreens, 13 other pharmacies, eight dispensaries, for a total of 42 pharmacies and/or medical marijuana dispensaries in the city. So, with the specific case of Cure Leaf, they originally came in for a building permit application on April 14th of last year. That permit was issued on October 17th after they met the 500-foot separation requirement. There is a school called Bill Grab located at 307 Eternia. That's on the second floor of an office building. It's a school for dyslexic students, between students in the age range of first to eighth grade. Again, they were within that 500. They have since modified their plans to meet that 500-foot separation requirement. So, that zoning approval was issued on September 22nd of last year. So, the options and the reason we're here today is to discuss how you would like staff to proceed. One option would be to do nothing, to allow the medical marijuana dispensaries to be treated the same way they are today. I did reach out to Chief Adderley and Chief Morris. Their concern was how that medical marijuana product is dispensed and how it's used. But we did not hear of any specific issues with any of the facilities we have in the city. Secondly, you can prohibit the dispensaries and pharmacies in the entire downtown master plan. So, the earlier graph that I showed, where the dispensaries could only be located in the areas reflected in red, we could amend our code to eliminate that entirely and not allow them in downtown. And then the third option would be to prohibit medical marijuana dispensaries and pharmacies within the Clematis waterfront district. And that is a geographic area bounded by Banyan Street to the south, DeTura, and then the waterfront on the east. So, when you blow that up, you see what it looks like. We have existing dispensaries now. So, the four we have downtown are all located within this district. Again, they would be grandfathered in if the commission chooses not to allow them in the downtown. You've got a CVS across the street from us, so we've got five within this district. Again, all five of these would be grandfathered in if the city chooses to prohibit them in this district. We could also add a 500-foot separation requirement around each of the dispensaries and pharmacies, which, again, would then limit what could be built within that circumference or that radius of 500 feet. So, that would eliminate additional dispensaries that are within that range. So, with that, I'll open it up to any questions you may have. And again, we're seeking direction from the commission as to how we would like to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Commissioners, do you have any strong preference? I see Commissioner Paduzzi, and then Commissioner Fox, and then Commissioner Lambert. President Fox.
I, I'm sorry.
Not just, I called her Commissioner Fox. She'd be President Fox, so I corrected myself. No, you're first, and then President Fox, and then Commissioner.
Thank you. I have so many questions. I'm not even really sure where to begin. But let me begin by stating you mentioned that we could prohibit it in the entire downtown area and that the ones that are existing would be grandfathered. Do we have any idea of the trend? Where is this going? Are the businesses that are currently in operation in the city seeing, doing good business? Or if you want to call it good business, or, but are they, are they busy? And do we foresee these things popping up all over the place if we don't do something about it?
Yeah, Commissioner, I'll be honest, that was a concern we had early on, dating back to 2018, particularly in the downtown. You know, we always envisioned Clematis Street as our entertainment, entertainment restaurant district. And then, when the first one came in, we thought, all right, that'll probably eat up the market for all of downtown. And then, lo and behold, you know, three others came in. So, I think there's going to be a growing trend. A lot of the states, when you go back to the earlier map, are legalizing marijuana now. So, I think it's going to become even more popular. So, I, I don't know specifically how each of the eight dispensaries are doing from a business standpoint in the city, but I suspect there's going to be a continued interest.
Want to follow up, Mayor?
Yes.
The licensure of these dispensaries is obviously different from the licensure of a pharmacy. They're, they, even though we're supposed to treat them the same, does a licensed pharmacy, that's a full-service pharmacy, are they permitted by statute or by regulation to dispense medical marijuana? Or do you have to specifically be a medical marijuana dispensary?
I believe that the answer is the latter, and I'll certainly defer to counsel to add in. There have, there has been some discussion, to your very point, about maybe on a statewide level, treating pharmacies different than medical marijuana dispensaries. That isn't the case just yet, but I believe, to answer your question.
And I'm going to go from, from memory, looking at the statute some time ago. But my recollection, the way that it's set up, is that the folks who actually do the cultivate, cultivating and manufacturing also have to have put into place their distributors as well. So, it's all part and parcel. It's not treated the same as they would license a typical pharmacy. But there is a preemption for the local government that requires that the local governments treat these dispensaries the same as they would a pharmacy if they permit them.
Thank you.
President Fox?
Thank you so much. I, I think what I'm hearing from people downtown mostly is that, you know, we're not against having these dispensaries. It's just that we want more variety. We want to have something for everyone. I think when I look at CVS, it's different than a dispensary because I don't think I've ever filled a prescription at CVS. I go there for cards or chopstick or, you know, other things. Whereas these dispensaries, it's only, it's very specific. It's like I wouldn't want four different bike shops or surfboard shops or whatever because we want variety. But I'm just curious if there's, you know, I don't want to say if we prohibit it from all of downtown. Let's say a CVS wanted to go into City Place in some point, the square. I mean, with our growing downtown, I don't, it's hard to say that we never would want another pharmacy if we have to treat them the same. So, is there not another option of, you know, like some kind of ordinance or something that says we can only have three of everything, you know, that, or a certain number where we're limiting the number of every option so that we can continue to have variety? I'm just, I'm just feeling like prohibit sounds like such a, it's very drastic for the fact that we're such a growing downtown. But we also want to, you know, ensure that we have a variety of what you said, the entertainment district, that there's enough restaurants and other options, shops for other people. So, I, I'm just wondering if there's another option that is not prohibiting for every, everything?
Yeah. Again, that's a tough question to answer. I think if the, if the state does make that distinction, certainly we'll have a lot more flexibility. And you mentioned the square as a potential for a future pharmacy. Where else, although we've had no conversations, but I, I could see an area like Nora, the North Railroad Avenue, possibly wanting a, a pharmacy there. I don't know if we can impose a geographic limit. I'm, I'm looking at counsel, but, yeah. It's, it's tough to answer that question without dealing with the state and how they regulate pharmacies and the dispensaries today.
And let me just say, for the record, this is another example where the state has basically usurped our ability as city leaders to do what we feel is best for our city. And so, our hands are basically tied at the state, by the state level. And, you know, each municipality is different. What we want to do or would like to see on Clematis Street is different from what Jacksonville may want to do or even Miami. But unfortunately, because the, the state has chosen to preempt our ability as, as the city to do what we feel is best for our city and our citizens, we are, we are stuck with this particular dilemma. I just wanted to get that out there. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I appreciate the different options that you've mentioned to us. And I know that this originally came out of a discussion about the number that are showing up in our entertainment downtown district. But I'm also considering, and of course, we don't have a crystal ball, so we don't know exactly what would happen. But if we start prohibiting in one area, will it then start pushing it and creating a plethora in another area? You've mentioned the 500-foot area that, I don't know, are you saying that that is only available to us in one of these options? Or is that available as a standalone option?
Right now, the dispensaries require a 500, 500-foot separation from schools. What we don't have in place right now is the 500-foot separation from dispensaries. So, this would be a new concept. So, if you have, in this case, you know, five dispensaries in our waterfront district, then if you imagine a 500-foot ring, if you will, around each of those, one could not be located within those districts as well. But right now, the only provision we have is the 500-foot separation from schools.
And so, you're saying we could allow, or we could set a regulation, have a 500-foot requirement from other pharmacies on its own?
Each pharmacy or dispensary, and I'm throwing out the 500. It could be any dimension you want.
Right.
Just to give you a scale, the Cure Leaf, which is the new one here at Clematis, and then the one adjacent to the police station, that's about a 1,530-foot separation between those two on the two extremes.
1,500 feet?
1,530, yes.
But again, those particular ones would be grandfathered in, even if we impose that 500-foot separation. Commissioner Warren?
Do we regulate any other type of businesses? Do we say that we can only have X amount of liquor stores? Are there within certain distances of other liquor stores? Do we say anything about candy stores? What, what other type of regulations do we have in place?
Typically not. The only one that I can think of is along Clematis Street. There is a restriction as to how many alcohol licenses can be given. It's two per block, so, block face. So, that's the only business where we actually regulate by account.
Commissioner Paduzzi?
Thank you. And I'm just thinking out loud here. The federal government regulates controlled substances, substances at the pharmacy level. You have to have a federal, you know, and even in order... You have to have a federal, you know, and even in order to prescribe it, you have to have a federal ID number to prescribe controlled substances. According to the federal government, marijuana is still a prohibited drug that cannot be prescribed by a licensed physician anywhere in the United States. It's my understanding. So the state has said, hey, we're going to allow these dispensaries, and other states have also, hoping that the federal government decide, doesn't decide to start enforcing our federal drug laws. Is there anything that, if we had an issue with this, is there anything that can be done at the federal level? And are these dispensaries really in the clear when you've got federal laws that are contrary to their business practices? I'm just trying to think out loud here as to, as to how this, how this whole thing works together. I know the state's allowing it, but the federal government's not allowing it. Or are they just, or are they just kind of sitting back and saying, hey, do what you want to do, we're not going to enforce these laws?
I think it's more the latter, and I think that's the very reason why this is primarily a cash business, because the credit card companies recognize that because of what you mentioned, this being a federal law and not all states acknowledge this, it's, it's pretty much a cash business as a result.
So, follow up. So, cash business, which, I mean, even just lends to, to the argument that these are not pharmacies. These are not anywhere like a pharmacy. They're having to take cash for fear that the feds would come in and pretty much say you're utilizing, or, or maybe the credit card companies themselves are not allowing because they realize it could be in violation of federal law if they're allowing transactions to occur for federally prohibited substances. It just seems to me, maybe we have some work to do at our state level if we're concerned about these dispensaries and the proliferation of these dispensaries. We probably need to do some work at the state level so that we could gain some power back locally. But I would think that there's, there's just, if we think outside of the box, there's got to be something that could be done if we're interested in, in slowing down the proliferation, can't say the word, of these dispensaries, just because they are operating in violation of federal law currently.
Well, Commissioner, I, I, again, I, I see your, I hear your frustration. I think we all are equally frustrated. And yes, let's, whatever we need to do at the, the state level, because it is the state law which ties together pharmacies and dispensaries. I, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly that there is a big difference in their business models. No, no doubt about that. But the cards that we have been dealt, and Madam City Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, is that dispensaries are allowed to go wherever pharmacies are allowed to go. And that, that is the frustration, not, and, and I don't agree that their business models are the same, just like you don't agree, but for whatever reason, in the infinite wisdom of our state legislatures, they've tied the two together. Is that the correct summary of...
They did. And I, and I, I hear your frustration as well. It is currently still illegal under the federal law. The federal law, the federal government has taken kind of a hands-off approach and let each state do what it's going to do without actually blessing those moves. Our state adopted a comprehensive medical marijuana statute by which they legalize the use for medical purposes and require local governments to treat those medical marijuana facilities like pharmacies.
President Fox.
Thank you. Going back to the example of the square in Nora, I guess those two examples would be one landlord, I guess, essentially deciding on the tenants, whereas Clematis Street is different because we have many owners, and so we can't really regulate that as well as if you were the square deciding on who your tenants were. So I guess with one of the options that you had mentioned about the number of feet, I guess, from the waterfront or something like, if this is what we could regulate on Clematis, I mean, could it go farther down Clematis? Does it only have to be, I mean, could we add not just the waterfront, but the entirety of Clematis Street as part of this option, since we already know that there's several here and CVS is here, but then we are not prohibiting the square in Nora from their decisions in the future?
President Fox, we'd have to tie it to a, a zoning district would be ideal. That's why we suggested the Clematis Waterfront District, because this district, again, contains all five, four dispensaries and one pharmacy within this district. We haven't seen any outside of this district, not to say that they may not go outside. But again, recognizing that Clematis Street is always intended to be our entertainment slash restaurant district, the staff recommendation was that if, if you wanted to prohibit them in this district, it would be easier to facilitate such a change. Certainly, we can add other districts if you like, or we could do the whole downtown. So it's a question of where you think you would prefer not to see the dispensaries, but again, keep in mind that because as of today, we have to treat pharmacies the same, whatever we do to dispensaries would, would also treat pharmacies in the same fashion.
Does the down, the Clematis Waterfront District include the Publix on Rosemary Street?
It does not.
Okay.
We looked at that because I knew that was going to be an issue, so.
All right. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. I don't know if, if many of you know people who have benefited from this type of medical treatment, but I know family members, I know individuals who have, and I think that it is something that passed overwhelmingly by the voters. And I think, you know, I definitely hear you, Mayor, that this is, the cards we've been dealt with the policies that we have to manage, I think that what we're looking at here is, in this particular area, we're seeing a cluster, we're seeing, we're hearing a lot of interest from others who, who want to open up shop in this area. I think, you know, I, I will stand by my statement before, I'm worried about, you know, if we start limiting one area, what does that do to pushing it out to other areas? But if you go back to that picture where you have the stars and where they all are, I think we, you know, have heard and, and seen this proliferation of these dispensaries in this area. And I agree with Commissioner Fox's statement that if it was, you know, any other business, if we started to see this clustering of, of these types of stores of all of the same, we want to have some diversity in our downtown area. So I would definitely be in favor of, of looking at whether that is the 500 feet or or more, looking at solutions for limiting this in that area.
In, in an attempt to try to give staff some direction, commissioners, would you be in favor of the recommendation, which I believe was number three, of prohibiting them in the Clematis Waterfront District with some kind of 500-foot or lesser or more, whatever we, we want, boundary so that there won't, again, we're, we're stuck with the, not stuck, we have to recognize that those that are already there, but if we have, if we layer onto the prohibition, a, a, some kind of geographical limitation in addition to that, is that something that you would be in favor of?
Yes.
Okay. A certain number of feet that, I mean, staff has suggested 500 feet, doesn't have to be 500 feet. I mean, what, yes, Commissioner Lambert.
I don't, I don't, you threw out 500, you said another was 1,500. I don't know what the exact magic number is for that, and, and maybe that could be part of the research that you come back to us with. I don't know what the, what I was saying is I don't know what the number is. Was that something that the staff could come back to us with?
Absolutely. I mean, you know, we could, we could have them, and maybe if you look at other jurisdictions and see if they have any similar types of geographical restrictions, we could talk about that. Now, I know there are several people in the audience who want to talk. Clearly, all we're looking for is direction from the commissioners. If this comes back, the public will have plenty of opportunity to discuss it at the city commission meeting. So this is not the last time the public will be able to weigh in. We generally don't take public comment at these meetings, so I'm just stating that the public will have ample opportunity to weigh in once the ordinance or a resolution is proposed to the commission. Yes, Commissioner Paduzzi.
I just have one comment that I just feel compelled to make, and I agree with you. We, I think this is reasonable, that if we put some sort of a 500-foot type thing, I think that makes sense. But in the bigger picture, just in case some of our federal elected officials are listening on the off-chance that they're, that they're hearing me, you know, it would be great to see federal legislation that, that addresses this, that makes marijuana a controlled substance that can be federally regulated, where our pharmacies would then be given the opportunity to dispense it like they would any other controlled substance, so we wouldn't have these two models of dispensaries, of a pharmacy that, that is, you know, does everything and a medical marijuana that just does marijuana. On the off-chance that someone out there is listening, I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
And you could certainly write a letter to your federal...
I probably will.
...elected officials as well. Okay, so what, what I hear is that we'll go with number three with some kind of foot designations, making sure that a particular dispensary can't be within 500-foot or whatever the number is of another dispensary, which also means that a pharmacy can't be within that same designation from either a dispensary or a pharmacy. So I guess that 500-foot would cover both. So if there is a dispensary that wants to go, go in, not only can it not be within that certain foot designation from another dispensary, but it can't be within that certain foot designation from another pharmacy? Is that the way that would work?
And, and a school as well.
And a school. Okay, all right. So staff, work on that. President Fox, you...
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, when we're saying prohibit it, though, on the waterfront district, that is, I mean, it doesn't matter whether it's 500 feet because we just are prohibiting them in general for, on the waterfront district.
Correct, correct. That would be the intent.
Okay.
Within the Clematis Waterfront District, the area outlined here, yes.
And by the way, do we know if that'll pass state muster, that 500-foot designation from another pharmacy or another dispensary?
So long as it's equally applied to pharmacies and...
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Commissioner Lambert.
I'm just curious if a, because you mentioned that one school, the specialty school, when schools go into a location like they're in, and you said they're in a, a business-type office space, do they have to check to make sure that there's no pharmacies or dispensaries when they open shop?
It's not reciprocal. If they move in after the fact, they move in with the knowledge that there is an existing dispensary or pharmacy there. So there's no check, there's no cross-check that we wouldn't prohibit the school. They're simply moving in acknowledging that there are other uses there in place within that district.
Interesting. Thank you.
And Mayor, what we will do is that we'll, we'll bring this to the planning board and downtown action committee because it does involve a code change. So we'll go through two different rounds of hearings, if you will, before we bring it back to the commission, and we'll have two readings at the commission.
And, and the public will have ample opportunity to speak at those meetings as well.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? So staff, you have direction?
Thank you very much.
Okay. I don't have anything under mayor's matters. Commissioners, you have anything for the good of the order? Okay. Thank you all very much. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.